Be licensed.
So they can go after them for fees or they can take the dogs?
I think this authorizes us to authorize the chief of police to either do one or the other.
Gotcha.
I heard they never incarcerate them.
I don't think they incarcerate them.
I asked the former vice principal of the Fairgrounds, did that go?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay.
I'm ready. You're ready?
I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, June 28, 2022, at 7:31 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference, which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website calendar. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderman Moran will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you're participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to no law. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Cleed.
I'm here via Zoom. I'm out of town. My husband is in the room with me, but I do have a headset on, and he can't hear the proceeding.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here.
Alderman Camo.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Caffey.
Present.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here.
You are 14 physically in attendance and one participating via Zoom.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Fulton. Mayor, did you wish to address something important this evening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. First, of course, and most importantly, on your agenda is the city budget. The Budget Committee has met numerous times, asked for a number of hours, asked a lot of questions, seen all of our departments, some new people on the Budget Committee. I know that you've, I'm sure that you've learned a lot about the budget and therefore really benefited from the experience. Thank you to Chairman Dowd of the Budget Committee for conducting all of the hearings. And the net result is the committee added $360,000 to the budget for various categories of some reductions and some additions. As usual, our challenge is to try to balance the needs of the city for services and for infrastructure improvements against the ability to pay, and that, of course, is what the Budget Committee has used its best efforts to do. So I hope you will pass the budget tonight, and we can move on to then fiscal year 2023. That's the budget that's proposed. I also, Madam President, wanted to address a resolution on tonight's agenda, which I think is a very important one. That's R. 2238, which would provide the funding for the, for the two related things. First of all, the squaring off of the Oval, that's the Walnut Street Oval, so that it aligns with Pearl Street. And number two, the reconstruction of the Pearl Street streetscape along with the squaring off. We will be receiving, and we have been able to win $2 million of state money for the squaring off part of the project, and the streetscape will complete it. We have, for many, many years here in Nashua, sought to, or had the aspiration of connecting Central Street directly with Pearl. The probability is that we, once this project is completed, we can redirect the traffic on Pearl Street East so that it goes directly to Main. And so one can drive from the Broad, from Broad Street, exit six, Broad Street, the Broad Street Parkway, Central Street, right, then proceed on Pearl and go right to Main Street. Through making strategic objectives, strategic investments, the city has been able to induce and see private investment in a scale that we have not seen before. If you think back over the last few years, we have seen tens of millions of dollars invested at Lofts 34. $30 to $40 million is being invested on Pearl, on the School Street, at the School Street housing. We've got tens more millions of dollars being invested by Boston Capital at the Monahan Manor, the reconstruction of the former public housing at Bronstein. We have also now, we're seeing demolition beginning at 146 Main Street, where that project at the former Indian Head Bank will convert to 22 units of housing, a building that's been vacant for quite some time. And therefore, this project, which will again represent a strategic investment, will in turn attract more private investment, a bigger tax base, a stronger, healthier downtown economy, and in the end, more tax revenue. So I hope that you will consider approving that important infrastructure project. I also wanted to mention briefly, Madam Chair, the, Madam President, the resolution, R. 2247, I believe, which would transfer $75,000, this is just for a first reading, $75,000 to provide the necessary funds on top of what's already been allocated to improve St. Andrews Park. We were able to obtain $50,000 through the relinquishment of a facade easement out on Amherst Street. This is pri, you know, not city money, and we're supplementing that or proposing that $25,000 so that the improvements at St. Andrews Park can be done. This is long overdue. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan have advocated for the improvement of that park, correctly so, and I believe that we will, you'll see that go to the committee, but I think, but I believe you'll find that that is definitely a park that needs improving with a playground and some other work, and in the end, that will be a very important project for the, for the South End. And finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention, and I'm sure Alderman Lopez will fill you in on the details, we have the Tree Streets Block Party coming up this weekend. Alderman Lopez, again, can tell you all of it, but I believe it's been changed from Saturday to Sunday, but I'll leave the remainder to Alderman Lopez. I hope as many as possible can make it. It's always a really good time, and you get to meet a lot of neighbors and residents of one of the downtown neighborhoods. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Response to the remarks of Mayor, Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for speaking to the resolution. I know it's a first reading. Just wanted to say thank you for calling that out tonight, and I also, I know it'll be taken up in committee, but I do appreciate and understand how we were able to arrive at this funding creatively, if you will say, and I just wanted to say thank you for calling that out. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, just thank you to the mayor. The Tree Streets Block Party will be on July 3. We'd initially planned it for Saturday, but there's a lot of rain, so we figured maybe it'd be Sunday, we couldn't go home. So it'll be July 3, the exact same time that we've been promoting. Took a lot of people, a lot of last minute pivoting to make this a great event, but we're very excited about it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings?
None.
Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding the new middle school naming, from Lisa Fodo, Director of Public Works, regarding the referral from the Board of Aldermen on Resolution R. 2238, and from Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development, regarding a communication on supplemental appropriation of $75,000, Resolution R. 2247.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items to be, expected to be acted upon this evening? No one in the chamber that has signed up. Lou?
Lou Juris here, 56 Haynes Street, voicing my support for the approval of the city budget, R. 22-035, and the efforts on Walnut Street, R. 22038. Think it's important to move forward on both of these matters. Important for the city, it's important for the bond agencies to see this happening, in my view, going forward into the end of this year and to early next year. And, you know, this is just, the Walnut Street project is important too for, as mentioned earlier, for downtown and its continued development and improvements. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else.
Lori Ordolano.
Okay.
I'm on the phone, so I can't raise my hand. Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I wanted to call in to, to put in my lack of support for the budget for this year. I'd like to see that budget trimmed down some more. I think the board needed to be mindful of what's going on in the economy, and I think the lack of information regarding the assessments has made it difficult. I'd like to point out that the city has been very secretive and non-decroc regarding the depreciation factor issue that was called out a few years ago, and they were working on decoupling depreciation from effective year builds to condition. I've asked for some reports on the effects on that, thinking it's going to affect older homes, and in four years, there's been no report given, and I think that when the mayor talked about the potential shift of 2.5% or 5% or whatever it's going to be onto residential properties because of the reduction in, a lack of growth in commercial properties, you've got a shift associated with depreciation factor as well that has not been discussed. And I think we should have full disclosure on that. I'd like to talk to you just for a brief moment about downtown. I saw there's an intern being hired through Downtown Improving Committee. I don't know if that intern is going to gather data, but there's been a group gathering data for two months on the restaurant, and I think that it's pretty clear that the use of the expanded outdoor dining just does not justify the barriers for setting it up. It's been very light down there. Your Saturday night is your busiest night. There are primarily three or four restaurants that I think have benefited from it, but you've got these barriers up to serve this 25 restaurants, and there are just no people there, even on a beautiful night. You know, it's extremely light, and I really don't see a lot of people down there. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to give public comment relative to items being acted upon this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Susan Lovering, City Clerk, regarding the issuance of warrant to Chief of Police for unlicensed dogs.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move to accept, place on file, and commit the warrant to the Chief of Police to issue the civil forfeiture.
You've all heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleed.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Caffey.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Susan Lovering, City Clerk, regarding NRO 5-6 compensation.
Do I have a motion? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to review the rules of the automatic procedure with all the women at large, Gloria Timmons, on NRO 5-6 regarding compensation, and may I speak to the motion?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, it appears that all, all the women, Timmons was on vacation, and let's face it, folks, I mean, our stipend, you know, we try to be here as best as we possibly can, but things happen. It could be vacations, it could be deaths in the family that occurred in my particular family, and different things that will take us away. It could even, unfortunately, as Alderman Sullivan would say, in their golf ball, but it's good to see Alderman Sullivan has joined us with his injury, so God bless him. But in, in looking at it, you've got to keep in mind, even though we do receive a stipend, this is somewhat a volunteer work, the amount of hours that we do put in here. And so I think that we can have a little bit of grace upon this matter. I think it could be properly handledly administratively, as long as we review, perhaps all of us, to remind ourselves what are the automatic procedures and our requirements to be at these meetings as much as we possibly can. And thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, yeah, I agree, thank you, Madam President. I agree with Alderman and Vice Chairman O'Brien. I think it's a dumb rule, and I think it's important to be here, and I think we all are doing our best to be here, every single one of us, but things come up, and I think the amount of work we do outside of coming to these meetings is also important, and that doesn't get taken into account with our stipend, it's coming to these meetings. And we answer emails, we go to committee meetings, we read all this stuff, and so I think her reasons were totally legit, she was on a long vacation, and then she was sick.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to the maker of the motion, can we clarify what the motion exactly is that's on the table?
Thank you.
Can you clarify what your motion is?
My motion is to actually, and let me clearly state it for the record, went to be paid on the NRO 5-6 compensation to pay all the women at large, Gloria Timmons. However, to review the automatic procedure and upon our requirements to be here, and just as a refresher of our commitments that we have here on this board.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Now that the motion is clear, yes, I will support, I will support giving the compensation to Alderwoman Gloria Timmons.
Alderman Lopez.
I will also support Gloria getting Gloria her stipend, because while looking at just the full board meetings as a measure of attendance is what the, the rubric is per the administrative guidelines, there's, she's very involved in the Cultural Connections Committee, in the Board of Health meetings, and in the mayor's, whatever, I forget the name of the review and comment, but she actually subbed in for me when I wasn't able to go. So there's more to being an Alderman in terms of attending the subcommittees, being a liaison to outside committees, and Alderman Timmons was reachable during her, her vacation by phone and email, because she responded to things during that timeframe. She did her job, and I think she would have been in the clear if she hadn't gotten sick too, but she's not the first Alderman to be sick too, and she's, I don't think she should be penalized. I also support reviewing those guidelines, because I think we should account somehow in a, in a more effective manner, the attendance at other events, or not events, but committees at least, legislative obligations beyond just the Board of Aldermen meetings. I think the special Board of Aldermen should definitely be counted in some way, and then committee participation as well.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Just so clarification, this would go to like the Personnel Committee to look at NRO 5-6, to see if it needs to be updated? Is that what this motion would do, or just to pay Alderman Timmons?
I think the motion is to pay Alderman Timmons, but to review the NRO.
How, how are we going to review it?
I'm going to review it, Mr. Vice Chairman, Vice President. Well, it's your idea.
Yeah. Well, to help along, and anybody want to help me wordsmith this, but basically, just with all of us, it's basically just to review the procedures, why we're required to make as many of these meetings as we possibly can, and that's what I'm after. So whatever the stipulations, NRO 5.6 regarding compensation, one of the things is to actually sit here and to be here, and if we're not here, to have a legitimate excuse to either let the president of the board or somebody, the automatic liaison to notify the president of board or myself, that you are properly excused. We do this at the State House, okay? You are supposed to be in your chair at the State House, but you do request, you know, leaves of absences. It happens. People are sick for a variety of reasons. We even have one to conduct important business, which is basically in general. So basically, it's to remind the Aldermen to stay in contact with the president of board of why they are absent. And we also want to pay, you know, you know, Alderman Timmons, but also to, to encourage members, and that includes myself even, to review NRO 5.6 so that we all have a clear understanding of the expectations that the citizens have of us. Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Maybe I have a parlay for you. I completely support paying Alderman Timmons, Alderwoman Timmons. Would it be out of order to maybe make a motion to amend or review it, because I think it needs to be updated, NRO 5-6?
Well, I'm not sure that it needs to be updated. Alderman Timmons did reach out to me and let me know she was sick. She did reach out to me to let me know she was, she was going on an extended vacation, so.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Madam President, that's not what I meant. I meant that we count the special Board of Aldermen's committee meetings towards attendance, or if that's even something the board has a taste for.
I see what you're asking. I'm going to go with Alderman Caffey, and then you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I make a suggestion? If Alderman O'Brien would be obliged, could you just make a motion to reject the communication, which would then pay her, and then you could separately bring up a resolution later on to review or to send to Personnel? To change, to look at the NRO and change it if, if we need to? Rather than combining the two in this one motion, just reject the communication, if that's the motion you'd like to make, so she gets paid, and then leave out the, the, looking at the?
Alderman Caffey, I could very easily, if it's the flavor of the board, withdraw my motion and just to compensate, but that's not the point. The thing here, as I look across this room, I see some people who've only been here since January. Now, whether anybody here since January read NRO 5.6, and it's time for me, even my six years of being on the board, to timely review it as well too, you know? And that's my only intention, not any form of punishment or anything else like that. I do believe that Alderman Timmons did make the right declaration to the president of this board, that she was tied up and on vacation and therefore deserves to be compensated. But the extra part that I threw in is just encouraging each member of the committee to review NRO 5 to 6. But if that seems to be the hangup, I will withdraw that.
Alderman Cleed.
Thank you, Madam President, and please forgive me for not having my camera on. I, the internet here is a little bit sketchy, and I think not having the video is going to help a little bit. I want to give my support to the, the payment and compensation with the stipend for Alderman Timmons. As, as you pointed out, all of these were excused absences between a vacation and a, and an illness, and I just want to remind people, and perhaps I'm mistaken on this, but if I'm not, I believe that this was originally put through because we had an Alderman who was not even around anymore, but still collecting stipend and not showing up, and this was to kind of remind everybody that we were to show up, we had an obligation, and so on, and this was the litmus test of that we were there and so on. And I want to remind everybody that last year I had two very close friends that passed away, one from suicide, and then I lost my brother. Granted, those happened in two different quarters. I don't know whether or not I missed an automatic meeting, but the truth is that if they'd all been in the same quarter, I would have missed it for, for reasons of grief, and I don't think that we take these lightly. If someone has legitimate excuse, they should be paid. I agree that we should always, any NRO that applies to us, we should always become familiar with it, so I agree with Alderman O'Brien of reminding us to check it out. I don't think we need to change it. It is there for a reason, and thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, as somebody that's been around for a while, this was originally instituted when we had an Alderman who was out for months, and not for legitimate reasons. I'm not going to go into the details. Also, the legislation, the NRO mandates the city clerk bring this legislation forward to the board. We have never withheld, other than that one person, payment.
No, we didn't even do that. We've never withheld.
That's what you said. We've never withheld for people missing for, for legitimate reasons. In fact, we've never withheld, period. So I think we ought to just pass the motion as it was originally stated, and, and people can review the NRO, and I think the president of the board can refer that to a committee of her choice for further review if she so desires. Other than that, I think just to meet the requirements of the NRO and let the city clerk off the hook, I think we need to pass this and pay Alderman Timmons.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I was going to say something similar to Alderman Dowd. I think that there's history here as to why this was put together, and I think, looking around the room, everyone makes a concerted effort to be here, and I, I don't think it's something we should have to talk about, someone's specific concern or reason for being out, like we were elected to do this job, we said we were going to be here, but I think it would be worth looking at, because I don't think anyone should have to explain, unless it's been months and months, why they were out, whether their children had COVID, or they were on vacation, or someone in their family died. I don't think that that's something that we need to be, you know, talking about and airing out here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Would I be ordered to withdraw my motion and to issue an additional motion?
Yes.
Okay. Madam President, I would like to withdraw my original motion, and the new motion would be to compensate Alderman, Alderwomen at Large Gloria Timmons, and we'll leave it at that. I, and if I may speak on my motion?
Do you have to?
Not just briefly. I think the point is, Madam President, the fact that we brought up NRO 5, 5.6, the curious will read it anyways, so I think my work here is done.
Alderman Moran, did you have something to add?
No, because I don't want to impact Gloria getting paid, but I, I think at a certain point, I'll bring something forward to have it reviewed after I consult with. after I consult with Attorney Bolton's office.
Very good. So you've all heard the motion? Further discussion on that motion? The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Kathy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
No.
Yes.
Alderman Mollsher.
Yes.
You have 15 A's and 0 N's.
And that motion carries. Petitions.
There is none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
None.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 4, 2022 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the June 16, 2022 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Budget Review Committee held last night regarding proposed resolutions, R 2233 and R 2242. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, last evening, we discussed these two resolutions, R 22038, which has to do with authorizing the Mayor and City Treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $2,450,000 for Walnut Street Oval Intersection Project and West Pearl Street Streetscaping. And also, R 22042, which is relative to the supplemental appropriation of $320,000 from FY 2022, assigned fund balance in the Department 152 Fire Account, 51330, ship coverage. Both of these were passed by the Budget Committee last night. R 22042 was amended to add $35,000 to make the total amount 355,000. So when it comes up, we'll have to amend to add that 35,000. And the reason being is that they were expecting some FEMA funds, which did not come in or were not authorized for this result. So in order to make the Fire Department hold, and that passed unanimously, by the way, we need to pass the 355. So must there any questions?
Thank you, Alderman Dowd. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
There is none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R 2235, relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget for the City of Nashua General Enterprise Special Revenue and Grant Funds.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I want to commend the Budget Committee for all of our meetings. As I started at the beginning of the process, I said there's going to be a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions, and a lot of things to review. The budget we received from the mayor was $302,998,903. The Budget Committee has amendments to the budget, which we will need to address. I don't know if we can do them individually or all in one. Corporation council? Whatever the Board prefers. Good, we'll do them all at once. So the items that were changed in the budget was Alderman O'Brien made a motion to add $25,000 to the Great American Downtown. Their budget has always been 50,000. It was cut to 25,000 for reasons that probably weren't right. And so to make them whole, as far as the salaries concerned, we added the 25,000. And in order to do that, we reduced the transfer to Downtown Improvements by $25,000. And that was also Alderman O'Brien. We added a transfer to Park Rehab Count 7058. Interfund transfers, I made the motion for Alderman Camo for Levine Field. The lighting at the field is dangerous in many concepts of danger, including falling things off the poles. And the handicap playground is right next door to it. So it's something that needs to be addressed from a safety standpoint, and it's in the amount of 275,000. And that's an interfund transfer. So also, a motion was made by Alderman Cathy to reduce the transfer to Downtown to Downtown Improvements by 75,000, which passed. And the added capital improvements, school deferred maintenance. The amount that came through in the mayor's budget was $100,000. Mr. Smith from the School Department had gone into capital improvements for about 1.8 million. We have 1 billion plus, over $1 billion in infrastructure in our 18 schools, and that doesn't account for the maintenance buildings and the central office. And they have four small projects that they can do for 160,000. So I added 160,000 to make it a total deferred maintenance for capital improvements in the School Department of 260,000. So the total adjustments to the General Fund were $360,000, which increased the mayor's budget to 303,358,903. So there was also increase in wastewater net assets from Alderman O'Brien for 41,772. So the proposed General Fund was 302,998,903. Has will be amended, it will be 303,000, 303,358,903. Enterprise funds remains the same at 44,82,704. And the special revenue funds stay the same at 59,581,977. So the amended budget would be 407,23,584. And having just gone through all of that, I will make a motion to amend the mayor's budget by $360,000 in the five items that I just read.
The motion is to amend. Discussion on that motion. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
No.
Alderman Kathy.
No.
Alderman Tebow.
Yeah.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Mollsher.
Yes.
You have 12 A's and 3 N's.
And that motion carries. Alderman Dowd.
Okay, the next motion is to approve the total budget for the City of Nashua at 407,23,584, with an increase of the General Fund to 303,358,903.
The motion is for final passage as amended. Discussion on that. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to be clear, I will be voting no on the city budget, and here's why. Sitting through the budget meetings, which were very informative, I learned a lot about the city, how it works, how we pay for certain things. Going into this year, with the inflation that's gone on, with the assessments that are coming, and I just heard a report on the way here that everything for your 4th of July cookout is going to cost 36% more year over year. Everything is coming on these taxpayers. To prep for the budget wrap-up meeting, which unfortunately I couldn't make in person, I did notice that the mayor, due to the year of COVID, asked all city departments to come in flat. And they were able to do it. So I know it's been done, and I'm not looking for flat. I wasn't looking for flat. I understand that we have to pay for services, and we have to pay for the people that make the city go. Thus, the Wallet Hub rating that we got off of a flat budget, because that's where it comes from. That was how I reasoned with it. This is a little too high for me, and that's why I'm voting no. I think with everything that's coming at our taxpayers, I would have liked a little bit more of a conservative lift in the budget. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask through you to Alderman Sullivan. I attended a lot of the meetings as well, either in person or I watched them afterwards. Because being new, obviously, I wanted to learn about some of these things. I don't think I necessarily were too excited about the amendments. I just said yeah to, and that's why I said yeah. Because it added 360 after I thought the budget was pretty tight to begin with. I thought there was some stuff in there we shouldn't have done. But I'm approving the budget, so I figured I'd approve that. But my question to Director Sullivan is, so we saw that some of the things were very, very tight to cut. And I know both you and Alderman Cathy had time to ask, like, can we do this? Can we do that? This couple of times, I asked some questions as well. What would you have cut from the budget that would make a big difference to the taxpayers? Because the reason why I ask that is because maybe there is something there that we should have cut.
Alderman Sullivan.
Okay, thank you for the question. I had a list of motions, eight to be exact, that totaled a little over $1 million that would have brought the General Fund to under 3%, about 2.8% year over year. Most of them, either I was not here for the budget wrap-up, thus the stitches on my face. So I do appreciate Alderman Cathy helping me out on a few of them, even though some of them failed. Expendable trust funds. Well, let me just say this. I was able to find motions to carve $1 million out of the budget without taking any money away from our firemen, our policemen, our teachers, or infrastructures. And those were things that I thought if we could get in under another $1 million, that would have brought it. And I only used the spending cap as a guide of that 2.8%. Above that may be uncomfortable. I understand now the way that we formulate it. I'm not saying this budget is over the cap. I got my education in that, and I get it. And I am not going to reopen that wound. So just to speak, just to answer your question, I did have some specific, I'd be happy to discuss those offline with you, if that's appropriate. But I did find $1 million to carve out of the budget, and that's how far off we were.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say thank you for answering that. I mean, we're going to vote on it tonight, but, you know, obviously going into next year, thinking about that budget, but for the next budget we have to do. But I appreciate that, I thank you for that. Sure.
Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
So last year, the mayor did propose a flat budget. And I believe we actually overrode him so that we could make sure that police had funding that they needed. And we scored highest in the Wallet Hub rankings on safety. So I think sometimes it is the Board of Aldermen to make sure, the Board of Aldermen's role to make sure that the budget is well thought out and not too austere. Because ultimately, we've had a lot of safety issues over the past year, increases in substance misuse, drug use. I hesitate to talk too publicly about standoffs with the police and issues relating to mental health issues and crimes. And Nashua PDs handled all of them. I think the increases we made to their budget are justified. And I think the mayor was doing his job in trying to make sure we came with a flat budget, the same way he was doing his job when he presented the budget to us this year, and the way we did our job when, you know, Alderman Camo advocates for his ward or Alderman O'Brien recognizes the value that downtown, Great American Downtown presents. We have to look at these different situations. And when we look more closely at the situations, it doesn't always mean cut. Sometimes it means sustain and make sure that work is being done where it needs to be done for the benefit of everybody.
Anyone else? Alderman Dowd.
I just want to point out that it's never, we never like to have to increase the budget. But I think that the park lighting was oversmessed in the beginning. And anytime you have a safety issue like that, when it involves young children, it's something that we really need to look at. It would be irresponsible not to. And this change in the lighting system at Levine Field is way overdue, as was expressed by Director Fodo. They've been trying to find the funding to do this for a while, and now it's in worse shape than it's ever been. As far as the deferred maintenance, when you have $1 billion worth of infrastructure in the School Department, $100,000 doesn't go very far. As I pointed out at the committee meeting one year, when they had $100,000 for deferred maintenance, we had to replace one pump at the high school for $90,000. Now, it's not a little pump, it was the size of a Volkswagen. Pumps a lot of water on four floors. So we can either pay a little now, because we're not covering, we had like 1.8 million dollars in deferred maintenance. We're only covering some of the smaller projects. And it's either pay me a little now or pay me a heck of a lot later. And one of the four projects is motion detectors as part of the security upgrade for the high school. So while we did add money to the budget, I think it was necessary, and it adds to the safety of the schools and the city. So I fully support the budget as I just read the motion.
Alderman Clemmons, and then Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I have voted, I've served under two different mayors. I voted for some of their budgets, I voted against some of their budgets. Last year, I was absent for the vote for the budget, but I probably would have voted no last year's budget had I been here. So most of my aldermanic career has been fighting against the spending cap because we have an arbitrary line in the sand that says we can't spend enough money, or we can't spend a certain amount of money, even though we have legitimate needs. And we've had very tight budgets. This year, with the way that the spending cap is calculated, we're way underneath that. But I think that's a matter of how it was calculated, more than anything else. But I am going to support this budget. I'm going to support it with the amendments. I was happy to support it. I think as a liaison to the Downtown Improvement Committee, I can tell you that that committee right now has about $200,000 in the bank, roughly. And, you know, that is a direct result of COVID-19, not being able to really have a downtown to spend money on. For most of the time that they spend money on things is for events and bringing people downtown. And in the last two years, we haven't been really doing that. So they've been able to actually set aside some money. So the need for them to have another $100,000, I think, is, at least in this fiscal year, was not exactly there. So we found some money there to give back to the community. And I think that that's a very important thing that we did. We also took 25,000 of that and put it to Great American Downtown. So in a way, we're still spending 25,000 extra on downtown. And I think that that's a good thing. I would have, I didn't pay attention too closely to the Budget Committee meetings. I read some of the minutes. I trusted the members that were on there to do the right things. And I would have liked to see what some of the cuts that Alderman Sullivan might have thought. Maybe I would have agreed with some of them, maybe I wouldn't have, I don't know. If I don't see them, I can't vote on them. But I am going to support this budget because, again, I think it was done right. I didn't see things that I would have necessarily caught in there. But again, I didn't look as close. I trust that the committee did their job. And I'm going to go with what the committee said on this one and vote yes.
Alderman Govea.
Thanks, Madam President. First off, just want to thank everybody on the Budget Committee and their chairman, Rick Dowd. Amazing work. That's not an easy committee to chair, for sure. And thanks to all the directors on City Hall and our chiefs for coming together and putting in their proposal. Along with my colleague in Ward 9, I'll be voting no on the budget just because I do think it's too high. do think it's too high. Obviously, police, fire, teachers, public safety, I get it. It's, you need to spend money on it, and that budget does need to go up. But I just feel in other areas, it was a little too, a little too much. Low taxes are the result of low spending, and we just came a little bit, a little bit too much in this budget. So for those reasons, I'll be voting no.
Anyone else? Motion before us is to, for final passage, Resolution 2235 as amended. Would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
No.
Alderman Cathy.
No.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 11 yeas and four nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2235 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 2238, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $2,450,000 for Walnut Street Oval Intersection Project and West Pearl Street street scape.
Alderman Jettie.
I move for final passage of R. 22-038, and I'd like to be heard on it.
Alderman Jettie.
So, you know, I'm making the motion for final passage, but when I was preparing for this, I, I kind of reviewed, you know, some, the minutes of various meetings, you know, sort of that could explain this and, you know, what this is for. And, you know, the mayor, you know, explained it quite well. However, you know, when I was, you know, preparing for this, I reviewed some of the minutes, and I discovered that, you know, there, you know, this, this resolution is asking us to authorize the issuance or the purchase of a bond to finance these two projects, the Walnut Street Oval and the West Pearl Street Streetscape. The Walnut Street Oval, you know, is something that we don't know a whole lot about. We, you know, what we know is that Director Cummings told us that this, and the mayor, that the city for some time has been looking at squaring off, you know, changing it from an oval to a regular city block, you know, squaring off the intersection of, you know, Factory, Chestnut, Central, and Walnut Streets. And that, the, the infrastructure bill that was passed by Congress, evidently Senator Shaheen, you know, put something in there that, that allowed us to, to benefit from some of that money that's coming to the state to, to help pay for that project. But the project hasn't been designed yet. He explained that the way, the way these federal projects work is that you get, you get the money, and then you, you design it, and then you, you build it. The West Pearl Street project, you know, the Streetscape is, is something that has been designed. And during the, when this went before the Board of Public Works, you know, it was represented that, that the Infrastructure Committee had, you know, reviewed this and, and approved it. And I'm on the Infrastructure Committee, and I didn't, I didn't remember doing that. So I went back and looked at the minutes, and when I reviewed the minutes, you know, the time that we saw this was back in January, when Director Cummings and, you know, there were, I don't remember exactly who, but there were professional, you know, designers that, that made a presentation to us about the, you know, their ideas about this Streetscape for West Pearl Street. But we were, you know, we never, we never approved it. The motion that we made, that was made by Alderman Dowd, was to give Director Cummings permission to continue to explore this and come back with more details later. And so I, I called Director Cummings, and I, I pointed this out to him and said, you know, did, did you come back to us? Did we review this another time? And am I just forgetting it? And he said, no, that was the meeting, and he thought that we had approved it. When I, when I read, read the motion to him, he agreed, no, you know, you haven't approved it, and, and you should. So, and, you know, the Board of Public Works, during their discussion, you know, they kind of relied upon the fact that the Infrastructure Committee had reviewed this and approved So I'm, I'm, you know, in a quandary as, as to what to do. I've, I've spoken to Attorney Corporation Counsel, Attorney Bolton, and, you know, he told me that we could, you know, pass the bond, you know, without having, you know, approved the particular project. But he also said, you know, if you, if you want to review the project, if you want to, you know, get the details, and, you know, you could, you know, you could, you know, table it and wait until you get the information you need. When I talked to Director Cummings, he told me that, that he would prefer that we go ahead and, you know, authorize the bond, and that, you know, he'll catch up with, you know, the details later. And I said, well, you know, if, if, you know, would it be okay with you if we, we tabled this until the next meeting? And he said, you know, that's not his preference, but yes, he's okay, you know, he would be okay with that. Evidently, there's nothing requiring us to pass this tonight. So I don't want to make a speech and then move to table to cut off debate, so I'm going to reserve my motion to table, you know, to allow questions or discussion, you know, from other members before doing that. But, you know, I would prefer that, you know, the Infrastructure Committee has a meeting tomorrow night. I don't know if, if we can get it on the agenda for then. Director Cummings said he could come and make a presentation. Yeah, I would just, you know, back in January, there were a lot of questions asked by members of the committee, and they were, a lot of, a lot of them were unanswered. A lot of them were, you know, legitimately, yeah, we'll, we'll get back to you with that and that type of thing. And, and it's, it's never come back to us. So I would prefer that it come back to the Infrastructure Committee, that we have a chance to get our questions answered. You know, I'm, I'm expecting that this is going to be approved. You know, I think it's, it's a great project, but I'm uncomfortable with, you know, the, the Infrastructure Committee being, you know, kind of left behind in this project. And the Board of Public Works, you know, they were, from their minutes, you know, there were a couple of commissioners that were upset that we, that this hadn't gone before them, that they, you know, that the, the whole project wasn't presented to them. And, you know, that was an oversight, you know, it's, I'm not blaming anyone for it. But I think, you know, since we have time, you know, I, I think it would be closer to doing it the right way if we, if we tabled this tonight and, and then, you know, revisit it at our next meeting.
Alderman Camo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So like my colleague from Ward Five, I attended those infrastructure meetings in January. And my understanding at the time from Director Cummings was that this was a kind of a top-down overview of the project, and what he was looking for from us at the time was the sense that the project was headed in the right direction and that he would come back to us with a more formal plan. And last night at the Budget Review Committee meeting, I had some of the same concerns that my colleague did, and I had the chance happily to get those answered by Director Cummings. And my understanding at the time last night was that his explanation, more or less, is that we need the funds in order to develop a finalized plan. And when that happens, we will get legislation that I imagine will get referred to infrastructure in the Board of Public Works and things like that. But we need to approve the bond first so that we can get the federal match, and then we'll know how much money we can allocate to the project, and that'll determine the specifics of the project. And that is when, you know, those subcommittees will get a chance to look at this. I don't know that referring this back to either budget or infrastructure at this point is going to change whether or not we want to approve the bond. I think that most of the people on infrastructure and budget seem to be in support of the project, and we need to move the funding along in order to get the more formal plan with the specifics and the actual infrastructure changes, and those will come further down the line. So for those reasons, I would support approving the bond tonight, and I would not support referring it back to committee.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. I do have here the minutes of the meeting. And not to throw my clerk under the bus, you do a great job and everything, but what everything does when you come down to clerking and you come down to minutes, if you read any particular minutes, and reading these minutes, you'll find sometimes it comes up as inaudible, other different things happen. There's also what's called a phenome typographical errors. You know, something gets omitted and something like that, and somebody at a later date could all of a sudden, I discovered something, and come up against it. But let me read from you one small paragraph from the minutes. So without any further question, I will entertain further questions, but without any further questions, we do have a pending motion, so we did have a motion, to have Director Cummings carry forward on this particular project. So without objections, I'll call the vote. That is part of this minutes. Okay, the vote is really unfortunately not recorded, but it appears that was the intention, and it seems to have been done, and maybe through some typographical error had been left out. But let's look at what this is. We have the PAC Center opening up relatively shortly. This is the first street, and those of you that sit on infrastructure come to realize, this is the first street of the neighborhood of a beautification. I don't know what you guys are doing here as Alderman, but I want to share with you what I am doing. This isn't my city, but I'm a custodian of the city. And what I hope is my time here and sitting in this chamber, that I can leave the city a better place than when I found it in 1981. I fought, I bled for this city, I broke bones for this city. But the thing is what I want, I want this city to grow. I want it to be a vibrant place for my grandchildren and, and to other generations that will come on. Somebody had the foresight to buy the land and procure it and use it for grilling pork. These are things that we're talking about. And in this case, it starts from street to street. Many of the Infrastructure Committee, you're right here. You'll be able to vote this evening on this particular thing for final passage. So I don't find it an absolute need to really rehash it again and table it and to get it back into infrastructure. Now, let me say about this project. If anybody's picked out the furniture yet, let me know, because that has yet to been done. This is a very fluid project. There's a lot to it, moving pieces that have yet to be discussed. One of the things that we've all talked about is changing perhaps in the direction of one ways. I mean, there's got to be futuristic traffic studies that got to be done to basically what type of seating for the public and other different things that are going to make this a worthwhile project. So it's very fluid. So I say to anything delaying it and send it back to the particular committee, if I saw a particular fix, and I have to agree with my call, my coach, excuse me, my clerk, Alderman Como, that I think it would be derogatory, because I think there's nothing that can come out of the committee that would change this particular vote on this particular thing. I think those that sat on infrastructure were very impressed with this project, see the enhancement, like I do, the future of the downtown, and want to see this project go forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Cathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too shared some similar concerns, both Alderman Camo and Alderman Jettie. I don't support sending it back, only because, as I'm reading the room, I don't think it's going to change much, and I don't think Director Cummings is going to have any more information than he has already. Just as a note, I would have preferred this to be in two separate motions, reason being, I'm all for the Walnut Street squaring off, because that's an 80-20 split, Fed pays, or state pays 80, we pay 20. That's an easy decision, because it's not a lot of money, and it's something that's, this is been trying to do for, I don't know, 15 years, 20 years, decades? That's easy. I don't, I'm not in favor of another general obligation bond for the streetscaping. We've been spending a lot of money, and I would like to know where the funding mechanisms are going to come for that 1.8 million portion, especially since Director Cummings did not specify that we would definitely change the direction, and there may be some other monies that need to be allocated later on to finalize whether or not we change West Pearl, including street signals and all those other things. So I would much prefer a soup-to-nuts plan for Pearl Street before I approve funding for that, but I would happily approve the funding for the square off. Unfortunately, it's not two separate bills, so it is what it is. But I, I, I would not, I would not support sending it back to committee. I'd just rather just vote on it now.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes. Couple things. One, I support doing it tonight. We are going to get another bite at the apple on the design. And, but it was my understanding from talking to Director Cummings that in order for us to be eligible for the federal funding, they have to know that the city is willing to commit to this project. All it does when we authorize this bond is show a commitment that we're serious in doing this project. But as I had mentioned many times before, just because we, we passed this bond resolution does not mean that we end up selling the bonds to this project. If we decide, for instance, in the issue with Pearl Street, that we don't want to do it for some reason, we don't sell the bonds. And, and there's no commitment. That money doesn't go anywhere. We can either take the money off of the bond, or we can use it for something else, but we don't have to sell the bonds until we approve the design. But we do have to commit to the federal government on the project. I'm sure Alderman Govea at some point is going to find out that when, at the airport, you're trying to do a project and you're asking 90% from the federal government, 5% from the state, and 5% from the city, they want to make sure that you're going to give them the 5%, or they won't give you the 90. I mean, I was on the airport for 15 years, and I can tell you, we never gave up that kind of logic. So get a lot done, and most of it on federal funding. So in this instance, if we pass this night and the bond's in place, does not mean that we're going out and buy, sell bonds for this amount of money. We're going to have a lot of bites at the apple on the design, and we will have to commit to the design as a board before we ever get into selling the bonds. So I don't think it solves anything, go back to infrastructure, because I don't think you're going to have any more information than we have right now. The idea is to get the federal government involved so we can do the designs, particularly for the Oval. And then that design will come back before us to, to put holy water on, and then the bonds will be sold, but not until then.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with my colleague from Ward Two. I think it's just, it's a great project. I think it will make that area of town look a lot better, and I think we got a very good presentation on it in the Infrastructure Committee. I don't think sending it back to committee would be the right thing to do. I just, I feel we've heard enough, and it's time to get the ball rolling and not let it get stuck in bureaucracy. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't support sending it back to committee, but I will definitely support the, the project as a whole. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
So from my perspective, this project isn't exactly new. I was much earlier in my Aldermanic career when we squared off the backend of that, and we had these weird little, we thought they were planters, so I think... And we had these weird little, we thought they were planters, so I painted little Lego heads on them. I think Paul Shea was one of them. And they turned out to be sewer interceptors. So if anybody's wondering, there's definitely an upside down Paul Shea somewhere. So that project goes back a ways, and it was partly because of safety. And around the same time, we did traffic studies, and we determined that potentially reversing one, the direction of Pearl Street would not only provide a better traffic flow off of the Veterans Parkway, but improve safety in some areas where traffic basically goes against itself when it's circulating. So this has definitely been a topic that's been discussed for some time. I was excited when it was, when it started to come together in a way that we may actually be able to look at the streetscaping and adjusting the Oval to a square in a relatively efficient manner, right after all of the construction for the Performing Arts Center was wrapped up. Because that street is very tired. I was trying to ride my Segway across it the other day, and I almost fell into like a hole. So it's, there's, that area has been, had heavy vehicles driving back and forth on it. It's going to have to be done anyway. So for me, making sure that we are, we have the resources available and we're nimble means we could be very efficient with doing this. Instead of repeatedly shutting down the area to try to square off an oval and, you know, re-landscape a street that we just had to repave out of necessity, I think it makes sense to do it in an efficient and effective manner. And we would get in our own ways. I think if we send it back to committee, one of the objections raised was that the Board of Public Works felt that it wasn't consulted itself first. We can't send it back to our own committee and then not send it back to them too. And I think that becomes very dilatorious. I did have a question for the mayor, who is the president, if I may. With regards to the proximity of this location to the school street and the Performing Arts Center, would the bond service be eligible for TIF funding?
Mayor? Thank you. It is within the TIF district. If there were sufficient funds left over after the dedicated expenses that are now being covered by the TIF, it could be directed to this project.
Okay. I'm assuming my Lego head didn't add enough to the property value to make up the leverage.
Well, at this moment, there may not be excess funds, but there could be if values increase in the TIF area.
Okay, well, that's something I definitely think would be, make this conversation a little bit more palatable, is being able to say that the bond could be at least subsidized in part by that. But I also think we have enough to move forward. And I think we have, I mean, the chair of the infrastructure committee feels confident we have enough. And that's where it would go for discussion. So I would support moving this forward without tabling it.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Thank you. I support moving this forward this evening. I come through this oval every single day, and I think it definitely needs some attention. I haven't fallen in a hole like Alderman Lopez, but I have, I have, I drive that every single day, and I think that this is an important infrastructure thing we need to look at. And we're just authorizing the bond, and there'll be lots more discussions on what that design will look like.
Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to add one quick thing, not to belabor the point. But with respect to the minutes, lest my abilities as a clerk be called into question, the motion at the time was to give Director Cummings permission to continue to explore and come back with more details later. And at least from my understanding, maybe it wasn't verbalized, but I thought more details later would be legislation. And one of those things is cost. So this, to me, is a fulfillment of that motion. These are the beginnings of that more details that we were expecting. This is the start of that process. And with respect to my chair, where just as motion carried, they don't, they don't record the actual roll, but if my memory serves correctly, it was a unanimous approval of that motion. Thank you.
Motion before us is for final passage of Resolution 2238. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Cathy?
No.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
You're 14 yeas and one nays. And that motion carries. Resolution 2238 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 2242, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $320,000 from fiscal year 2022, assigned fund balance into Department 152 Fire Account 51330, shift coverage.
Okay, so Alderman O'Brien, do you have an amendment to this?
Yes. And Madam President, may I through you ask Alderman Dow, I made the amendment, but I want to make sure that I'm highly accurate to the dollar amount. So may I ask him what the total cost should be based?
You want to add $35,000 to the 320, so it ends up at $355,000.
So, excuse me, can you repeat? $35,000?
$35,000 added. Total amount, $355,000.
Is that your motion to amend?
Yes. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion relative to the supplemental appropriations of $355,000 from fiscal year 2022, assigned fund balance into Department 152 Fire Account Number 15330, shift coverage.
The motion is to amend. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Cathy?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
You're 15 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to amend R. 22042A, relative to supplemental appropriation of $355,000 from fiscal year 2022, assigned fund balance into Department 152 Fire Account Number 51330, shift coverage.
Alderman O'Brien, we already passed the amendment. And now what we need to do is pass the--
That's what I want, final passage.
Final passage. It's already been amended. Okay, that's your motion.
Excuse me, Madam President. Thank you.
The motion is for final passage of Resolution 2242 as amended. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Cathy?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
You're 15 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2242 is declared duly adopted as amended. Unfinished business ordinances?
There is none.
New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution R. 2245, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $50,294.73 of fiscal year 2022 unanticipated revenue into Fund 7024 opioid abatement expendable trust fund.
Just briefly, I want to mention that because Donna was out for the last week, that the new legislation didn't get added to the agenda. So I don't know if all of you have a copy of this, but, okay, just want to make sure you understood what. Okay, are there further sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Como, Alderman Dow, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first--
And me.
Alderman Cle? Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 2246, relative to the transfer of $4,500 from Department 194 contingency, Account 70100 general contingency, to Department 103 legal accounting classification, 51 salaries and wages.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee. And Alderman Cle?
Madam President, yes, please, thank you.
Alderman Timmons? Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 2247, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $75,000 of fiscal year 2022 unanticipated revenue into Fund 7058 park rehabilitation expendable trust fund.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Como, Alderman Dow, Alderman Tebow, and I will co-sponsor as well. Given its first reading--
Me too.
Alderman Cle?
Sorry.
Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances?
First reading of Ordnance O. 2219, changing the downtown improvements funding plan.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Como, Alderman Dow, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cle?
Yes, thank you.
And myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Ordnance O. 2220, establish--
Madam President, if I may, can you also send that to the Downtown Improvement Committee as well?
Yes.
O. 2219?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, Madam Clerk.
First reading of Ordnance O. 2220, establishing one-way streets and changing the stop intersection near Franklin Street School.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Moran, Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Cle? Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Ordnance O. 2221, establishing no parking areas during school hours near Franklin Street School.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Cle, Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Ordnance O. 2222, updating environmental health department food service fees.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Moran, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dow, Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle? Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of Ordnance O. 2223, updating fire prevention fees.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself.
Yes.
And Alderman Cle, yes. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for public comment. In the House, we have Beth Scare.
There's no microphone.
Oh. Well--
Take one, I don't even want it.
Speak very loudly.
Can you put your microphone, Alderwoman Kelly?
Or if you want to come over here. There you go.
Yeah, go ahead.
Neither side.
Here you are.
Kind of scary being in here. Okay.
Tell me about it.
Yeah, I thought maybe you'd run down the hall. Just lift it up.
Oh, like that? Yeah, I'm back, Beth Scare, 111 East Hobart Street. I'm back again to talk about my disabled woman's sports flag in spite of being accused by Alderman Melbourne Moran Jr. of blocking arms with the Satanic Temple, despite his statements implying my disabled woman's sports flag makes his clients feel suicidal despite false accusations that I tried to damage Shaja Bell's business. I'm here because women deserve better than to have their sports dominated by men. Look around the room, and who are the tallest here, people here by far? That would be Mayor Donchus and Alderman Como. It's no coincidence that the tallest people here are both men. Men are bigger, stronger, faster than women, and that is why women's sports were created. Without separate sports, women don't have a chance in sports competitions. Everyone in this room knows this, and yet the abuse of me and my flag continues. Two weeks ago, a member of the Nashua Democrats who was in the audience here called me the C-word after the Board of Aldermen meeting while I was handing out my info about women's sports. I and all women deserve better treatment for speaking up for our sex-based rights to our own sports. And I appreciate all the Aldermen that took the information I handed out concerning the science of why women deserve their own sports. I hope you find it enlightening. I am happy to share it with any of the Aldermen who would like to have it. Thank you.
Don't see anyone online. So we're going to move on to remarks by members of the board. I'll start over here tonight. Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to acknowledge that we had the Pride Parade over the weekend, and it was very well received. It was very popular. We had a lot of people out. I know my company had sponsored and had a tent, and, you know, some people may have come by and said we were the most popular tent. But that might be up for debate. Alderman Kelly. But I think it was very happy to see that Mayor Donchus was there and many other folks from the Board of Aldermen, so many state reps there as well. And I think it clearly says that we're a welcoming city to everyone, no matter how they identify or what type of person they are. I think it was great to see that sense of community on Saturday, and I was happy to be part of it, and I was happy to be joined by many other Aldermen here and other elected officials to support that community. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, I also wanted to remark on the Pride Festival and Parade. It went really, really well. I am obviously jealous. After years of organizing the Tree Streets Block Party with the help of numerous residents and organizations, we could only hope to have that many vendors and that kind of a major positive impact. So it was a really well-run event. I want to thank Alderman Kelly for her leadership this year and in the past in helping establish that. Mayor Donchus and the many members of his staff that pitched in, and the different community members. It was a great event. It was really well-attended. It was an opportunity for me to debut my new steed, Gary. All of you are looking right at him. But it was a fun event, and it was, I think, very welcome after a lot of discouraging comments and setbacks that people in the LGBTQ plus community have experienced. And I'm glad that we're able to be welcoming and see the kind of camaraderie that we share and the strength and diversity. With regards to the Tree Streets Block Party, the weather has not favored us, so Saturday was looking like thunderstorms all day, and it just kept getting worse every day I was looking. So we did move it to Sunday, July 3rd. So it will still be this weekend. It will be on Sunday now. And we coordinated with the churches, we coordinated with the different groups, and I am very impressed by everybody's willingness to be nimble with their 4th of July weekend to make sure this party goes off, because we want to do something for the residents, we want to do something for the neighborhoods, but we want to do something for the city, because we're proud of the Tree Streets, those of us who live in them, and we're proud of the different groups and efforts that are underway there, whether it's like skateboarders, BMX, revived recovery. There's even a new performer, Flow Free or Die, who the main leader of it grew up in the Tree Streets area, and those, all of the, you know, members of PAL and all that kind of stuff. It's a really good event. I'm really excited about it happening this Sunday, and I'm really grateful for everybody who's helping make it possible. So I encourage anybody who is available on Sunday, or even could be available, they made a little changes to their schedules, definitely stop by. It will be 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Ash Street between Central Street and West Hollis. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a second to remark and give my thanks to the school board who decided last night to name the new middle school after my mentor and friend, Brian McCarthy. It's a well-deserved honor. Brian served this city with dignity for 25 years. And if it weren't for his efforts, we may not have that site for that school. And I think it was appropriately named, and I wanted to thank the school board members who voted to move that forward last night. It's well-earned and deserved, and I'm sure that Brian is smiling down on all of us. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Being right here means that everyone's already talked about the things by the time it's my red mark. But that's okay. I will. I'll do it anyways. I also wanted to remark on the Pride Festival. It was a lovely event, as it has been the last few years. And I thank everyone on the committee and the mayor's office for helping us get it together. I had a very long line at the merge tent, so I think maybe we were the most popular, but maybe you were second. I don't know. I also wanted to thank Alderman Lopez for his leadership on the Tree Street Block Party. It's not quite as big, but it is a lot of fun, and I will be there on Sunday. So looking forward to that, and I hope other Aldermen will join in. And then I just wanted to thank the Budget Committee for all the hard work on the budget this year. I know it's not easy, and especially if you're new to it. It's a lot of numbers. There's a lot of things that go into it. But I think that everyone really put in effort and thought through this to make sure that it was fair for all involved. So thank you for everyone's work and for your leadership at Alderman Dowd.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Years ago, I don't know how many years ago it was, when David Dean used to head up the budget. I always thought, oh my God, you know, what's he have to do? And then somehow, probably thanks to Alderman McCarthy, I ended up as Chair of Budget because I did Chair of Budget for the Board of Education for a number of years. And it is a lot of work, and thank God we completed it tonight, because I get some more free time. But it is a lot of work. I talked to all the vision directors ahead of time. Go through this book several times. It's really scary when you know what page things are on. But that's what it takes. And from what I've seen, there's no fluff in that budget. And I think that the concerns about the tax rate are always valid. In past years, we found that additional revenues come in later in the cycle, and the tax rate ends up not being as high as we thought. We saw that occur this year with the new appropriations or the assessments. But it seems like every year we have something. For two years, it was insurance costs, which really killed us, because that was millions of dollars. So I think that we did a good job on the budget, and I'm glad that I can put this green book away. The other thing is, yes, I was very pleased that the Board of Education named the new middle school after Brian McCarthy. Brian and I were very close friends. He was my mentor. He was one of the smartest guys I knew. He was one of the smartest software people I ever knew. No computer problem he couldn't fix. And he put in countless hours over decades to improve the schools, to make them more functional, safer, and together to build schools that would last. We had too many schools that we built in the interim back in the days that fell apart. The old, now Nashua High South, didn't last 15 years. And that's a lot. That's not good. The new high schools today are 20 years old, and they look brand-new. And that's a testament to Brian and the joint special committees that put those schools together. So I did get official word from the school department today that the name is official, Brian S. McCarthy Middle School. And the architects and the construction managers already know, and things are changing as we speak. We also, the Board of Education, passed along to the joint special the new monies for the security vestibules, the three additional schools that need them. I think most of that's going to be federal money, so... But that's something else on the joint special's plate. Right now, we have four schools. And you'll find out more about Franklin Street. That's moving ahead, finally, after solving things with the state fire marshal. And very shortly, in fact, we expected it last night, that May Nustable and Burrit Hill will be transferred to the joint special for rework. But both of those schools are open-concept schools. And as far as COVID or colds or pneumonia or anything else, terrible. It's a Petri dish. So the new project will close in, make classrooms, do a Hy-Vac system. Fortunately, we don't have to do anything on the outside. Those projects have already been done before. So a lot of things coming up for the joint special, and I do enjoy working that. And most of the time I put in, I dedicate to Brian, because he taught me almost everything I know about buildings, and it's a lot. So, thanks.
Alderman Gavilla.
Thank you, Madam President. Two things. Got to go to the farmer's market outside here on Saturday. That was fantastic. I think I have enough vegetables to last me quite some time now. So I'll be healthy and slimming down a little bit. It's always good. And then second, I got to go to the DPW Summer Fun Day at Greeley Park on June 18th. That was a great event over there. It was a good turnout. It's nice to see everybody kind of back out and about again at Greeley. It was the first big event that's been there in quite some time. So it was good to see it. And summer's here, so get out and enjoy the city. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of things. I want to acknowledge what Ms. Skare had said earlier and support what she had said, that what she said was true, that a member of the audience did call her that word. And I certainly do not condone that word. And Alderman Melbourne Moran was with me as well, and he said right at that moment, he did not condone that word. And he swiftly escorted the gentleman outside with me trailing behind, so that there would be no more of that kind of language or that kind of attack. The one thing she left out, she made sure to say that what party the person was for, and maybe that's true. I think it is true. I think he is a Democrat. But it's her neighbor as well. So they definitely have some neighborly issues that I don't want to get involved in, and none of us probably want to get involved in. But there's a deeper thing going on there than just some random Democrat coming in here yelling things at her. And I just wanted to kind of point that out so that people don't think that, you know, that kind of stuff happens here. And despite myself and Alderman Moran's views on Ms. Skare's things, we moved him out of here. And, you know, that kind of stuff is not tolerated. It doesn't matter who you are or what party you belong to or whatnot, or what views you have. So last week, I went to the opioid task force meeting, the mayor's meeting that they have. I haven't seen one on the calendar for a while, so I thought I would go and attend it. You know, it's a good thing to have. I thought I learned a lot of different information about the different organizations. But a lot of it was just reporting stuff. The numbers have gone up, and not a lot of talk about things that are being done to help. And so I'm hoping that in the future here, they'll start doing that, because the numbers have gone up. So interesting stuff to listen to if you have time. It's during the day. I just put my work on mute and put that on on my other computer so I could listen to it. Pride Parade in the festival. Fantastic. I expected there might be some people maybe protesting against it, but streets were clean. It was awesome. Great, great event. It was great to see Alderman Moran and Alderman Lopez and Alderman Cleese and the mayor and the organizer, well, part of the organizing. They did a great job, Alderman Kelly. Awesome job. It was really great. People were happy. And, you know, like Alderman Gavilla said about people being out and being able to talk to people and do things and go to different events. But it was hot. It was really hot. But it was fun, and I'm very appreciative that people were able to go out there and have a good time and a lot of bonding out there, so that was good. The last thing I want to bring up, two things that are connected. I usually don't, I try not to talk about personal stuff too much, but I'm proud of my Babe Ruth team last night that came in second in the city championship. They worked extremely hard, and they weren't the best team, but they beat the teams they needed to at the right moment. Now, if they would have won last night, I wouldn't be here tonight. So that would have been a problem. So I wanted to vote on the budget. So thank God they lost, right? I'm just kidding. Great kids, great coaches, great parents, extremely rewarding to coach in the city. And thank you to Parks and Rec for putting it on. It's one of the cheapest. That and basketball, $20. You can't go wrong. Maybe we look into upping that to $25 or $30. But great event. And on July 4th, I'll be at Holman Stadium at 11 o'clock for the Silver Knights game. Before that game, we will be honoring Coach Adam Dombrowski, and I'll be speaking in front of that or presenting him with an award, 30 years coaching in the city. And for Adam, I think he also works for the city. I think he does some traffic violation work. So we'll honor him, and 30 years is a long time to coach kids when you don't have a kid on the team. So congratulations to him, and hopefully you guys can come out for some of the July 4th celebrations we'll have here in Nashua. Thank you.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to go before him. By the time I can get around to me, I forgot what I was going to say. Well, anyway, no offense. Save the date. The multicultural festival is September 17, 2022, at Greeley Park from 1:00 to 4:00. We have a rain date of September 18, which is the next day. It's going to be full, vendors, performers, music, arts, and kids. Lots of kids. And we need volunteers. So any of you guys want to volunteer? Just thank you. We got to run to any more volunteers? This is a great event. And I think it will behoove you to come, because you will meet other people other than yourself, somebody that look like me. So are you ready? Okay. Well, anyway, save the date. September 17, 2022, Greeley Park, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to take a few seconds to recognize Alderman Dowd. Alderman Dowd, it's been my pleasure to serve as your clerk on budget. Every single year, I've been doing it for several years with you now. We basically kiss the end of May and June goodbye, you know, between other committees and everything. But for those other Aldermen that are on the Budget Committee, it's yeoman's work, and I thank you for your direction in getting the task outdone on time, whether you agree or disagree. You did a fine job this year, so I thank you, sir. The other thing is, I would like to also recognize our other board, and that's the Board of Education. I, too, was under the tutelage of Alderman Brian S. McCarthy. He's the only guy I know that could herd cats, you know? And it was my pleasure to serve with him on this particular board. Whether you liked him or you had some professional disagreement with him, he was fair to you. And I tell you, when it comes down to looking at a local hero to name, yeah, okay, we have a Georgia Wash, but we don't have to look too far to have a good icon in our community that Brian McCarthy was. The other thing I would like to mention is we're coming right upon the 4th of July. I wish happy Fourth, Happy Birthday, America, to all the rest of the citizens. I would like everybody to wake up July 5th with all their body parts. So therefore, I'll make my timely fireman reminder. I've heard from a little birdie that the mayor has selected some pretty good fireworks that will be on display at Holman Stadium. It's best to let them be handled by professionals and everything. And to remind you, it is against the city fire code to discharge fireworks in the city. And the final thing, I have to do this, and if I may take personal pleasure, I hit 39 years of marriage with the wife. She's sitting at home. I love you, babe, and I'll be home shortly. Thank you.
Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President, and happy anniversary, Alderman O'Brien. I want to start with saying that the Pride Parade was very hot, and it was wonderful. And Tom, I enjoyed meeting Gary. And you're a little spinning around, so... I'd also like to thank the Board of Education for naming the school after President McCarthy. I only was able to serve 11 months with him, and I feel cheated. I am on the joint special school board, I mean, school building committee because of President McCarthy. He spoke with such zeal and zest. It was just a committee I felt I really wanted to be on, and I felt privileged that he put me on that from the very beginning. And all those who worked on the budget, those who attended and so on, you did a great job. And I'm glad to see the $275,000, which is actually the majority of the increase over the mayor's budget for the Levine Park. It's a very dangerous situation, and I'm glad that we were able to put the money on that. And congratulations to Alderman Tebow and Babe Ruth for their second-place win. And the multicultural event, Alderman Timmons, when we get a little closer, like Alderman Tebow, please let me know, and I will see if I, I will probably be able to help. And very last, Ward 3 is having their ward meeting on July 13 at 7:00 p.m. at the Hunt Memorial Building. There will be members from the Nashville Police Department there, Public Works. The mayor said that he would try to be there as well. I have not reached out yet, but I'm hoping that someone from Public Health can be there as well. So thank you so much, and I'm going back to my vacation.
Enjoy. I'd like to wish a happy anniversary to Alderman O'Brien and his wife. I'd also like to thank Alderman Dowd and the Budget Review Committee. It's quite a process. It gets some long nights. But it came together, and I want to thank you for all the work you put in on that, everyone on the Budget Committee. Also would like to thank the Board of Education for the move they made on honoring the McCarthy family by having the school named after Brian. Brian was an incredibly brilliant man. He's probably the smartest person I've ever met. He knows something about everything. He was such a bright man. You could ask him anything, and he, you know, he'd just take a second, and it just flowed. I mean, he was, I was in awe of him, honestly. He was a really, really wonderful man. So I think the honor is great, and I want to thank the Board of Ed for doing what they did. And that's all I have. Committee announcements. Alderman Kelly.
I was hoping for another bite real quick.
Ah, okay.
If you don't mind. Not a committee announcement. Farmer's Market is excellent on Sundays. I just didn't want anyone to show up on Saturday thinking our farmer's market was here. And I didn't remark on Brian McCarthy, but I feel similar to Alderman Cleese, and he was incredible for the time that we were able to be mentored. And I'm grateful to have this honor for him. I wish I had had more time, and I know many people here did, so...
Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow evening, in the Aldermanic Chamber, there'd be an Infrastructure Committee meeting starting at 7:00 p.m.
No Budget Committee, Alderman Dowd? See the look I got?
And it was much rejoicing.
Any other committee announcements? Seeing none, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the June 28, 2022, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes, of course.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gavilla.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
No.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
No. Yes.
We have 12 days and 3 days.
And that motion carries. Good night. We are adjourned at 9:19 p.m. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.